All right, number three, this will be hopefully informative for folks at home. Discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. You just gonna go one at a time here?
We are, so just as an introduction before the various directors come up, you know, the, as of last Friday, operations have changed for the city in that we've closed buildings that are typically open to the public, they've now closed. We are trying to continue with somewhat business as usual, and each of the directors will talk about the services that they're still providing and the impacts to their services. And, you know, it's important to us during these difficult times to be able to continue to focus on the, what's essential. So, police, fire, we continue to have public works folks, addressing water, wastewater, the treatment plants to make sure that they maintain operational. And then in development services, Mr. Moody will give an update in terms of planning and building. And it's important for us to be able to still be able to serve our residents. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Landon to provide an update on the police department.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I just want everybody to know that the police department is focusing mainly on what we always do. Our primary mission remains to answer 911 calls, protect public peace and property, and to be a calm reassuring presence for our community during this crisis. We are working in partnership with our fellow law enforcement officers throughout the region. In fact, we just put a video out that's available on all the different city and county websites that tells how we're gonna enforce the government's executive, governor's executive order. So I advise people to watch it, I think it's a good, quick, a minute thirty-three to watch it. Our records, city manager was talking about what's closed. For us right now, the records department at the Yuba City Police Department is closed for almost all business. 911 is still available, obviously. If you come to the police department, you need immediate attention, there's a phone outside, that's still available. And also, we are doing vehicle releases. Some of the things we're trying to do right now is we're prioritizing calls, and we're recommending that citizens use our online reporting whenever possible. We're maintaining a strong presence, especially in areas that require our presence right now that could be a little bit more critical during these incidents, and where people are tending to gather, grocery stores, gas stations, drugstores, medical centers, critical infrastructure of the city. Trying to have a very proactive presence. As far as the businesses right now, we are doing a, we have a program set up for compliance. We're going to all the different businesses with a flyer that identifies what the fourteen pages of essential services actually are, what businesses are not covered by that. We're trying to make contact with all the open businesses right now, give them the flyer. Hopefully, we gain voluntary compliance. Our practice is exactly like we have across our region. So if that doesn't work, obviously, we do have things that we don't want to get to, but we do have the ability to enforce those businesses that are not following the governor's guidelines. Right now, our calls for services are down. Our accident calls are down, which is good. So we're able to be out there patrolling a lot more effectively. As far as the governor's executive order approach we are taking, exactly, our officers are taking a compassionate, common sense approach to the order. We're violating the order, although it is technically a misdemeanor, that's our absolute last resort at this point in time. This is not a criminal justice approach, but this is about educating the public, and that's the way we want to continue to do this until we can no longer do that. So with that, I will open it up for any questions that the council may have.
And just a reminder for council, if you could, to make sure you speak into your mic so Shannon can hear you clearly, please.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, chief, thank you for the update. It's good to know that the call volume is down and that you're ready to respond to what happens. I think it's fair, at least from my point of view, very brief statements thanking your regional partners in coming together and messaging cooperatively and consistently. I think that's going to go a long way. And I appreciate what you're doing and the rest of the Yuba City Police Department stepping up and doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Through the mayor, chief, I've heard really positive response from business owners on the efforts of going out and speaking to folks and helping with that because there were folks that were already complying, and then there were, then there was a group that wasn't. And the videos that have been put out have been really helpful and supportive, and so keep doing that kind of work that you're doing. We appreciate the education and the school resource officers being able to go out and because that's, they're good at that, so, you know, to go and speak with business owners and yourself. You primarily going out yourself too as well and taking that community approach as we do with our community, so thank you.
Thank you, council member.
And through the mayor, I'll just make it short and sweet, that way we're repeating ourselves. I just want to thank you and your staff for everything you do to keep our city streets safe for everybody in our community. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, council member.
And through the mayor, chief, I really do appreciate the educational approach that you guys are taking. I have friends that are in the greater Sacramento area, and they have concerns about different measures that's been used in other communities, so I really appreciate you being proactive with our department here. The only question I have for you, just to reassure our local businesses here, is since so many of them are vacant, we have increased our patrols and keeping an eye on the businesses while the owners and the employees are away, correct?
Absolutely, and that's the good thing about people self policing themselves, it's given us more time as the call volume goes down to concentrate on areas where businesses are closed, as well as the businesses that are open, and having people in there like the grocery stores.
So by staying home, we're actually allowing you to keep us safer then, is that what you're telling me?
Absolutely, and themselves.
All right, thank you, chief.
All right, very good points. Thank you very much for all the efforts, chief, we really appreciate it, and those your staff. I know I've done a few videos recently, and I want to specifically thank Katie for all the hard work she's put into that and the patience she showed me during take number twenty-seven and everything else, but she's doing a great job, and so thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do want to reiterate that what you have all said is that we do have a great staff and working together with the community, we'll get through this.
Definitely, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm gonna also, instead of just speaking on the fire department, I'm gonna discuss the city has operating for the last couple of weeks, Department Operations Center, also known as a DOC. And what a DOC is, is comprised of coordinators of essential services throughout the city departments to make sure that we are focusing on providing continuity of a government and maintaining essential services, providing accurate and timely information, and documenting all the expenses and preparations that go along with this COVID event. So we meet for an operational period, situation reports are disseminated from these meetings, and that way allows everybody in the city to be on the same plan going forward for the preparation of this. On the fire department side, also like the police department, our call volume is down. We have seen an uptake in flu-like symptom calls. We've established protocols and as emergency medical dispatchers to ask those questions to attempt to identify COVID cases prior to our arrival. We would encourage people in the community, if you are experiencing some of those symptoms, make sure you answer those questions accurately and honestly. It allows our firefighters who are going out there, that are doing a lot of brave acts going out in the community, to make sure that we maintain a low level of risk for them. And we put a lot of protocols to reduce that overall risk to our first responders. So that's a main area of emphasis, along with procuring PPE and long-term supplies, whether it's food supplies, fuel supplies, all of our vendors have been working great, and we have not seen a hiccup at all in that process. And that's where we're at with the fire department. Our administration building is closed to the public, and all fire stations are closed to public entering, again, to just minimize that risk of exposure. Council members, do you have any questions?
One quick question, chief. You said you've seen an increase in flu-type symptom calls?
Yes.
Is that, do you think because of the COVID-19 crisis, I can't imagine ever even being tempted to call 911 when I've had the flu? I mean, is it just associated to other reasons that you're called out, or?
As of right now, we have not received a confirmed case in Sutter County for COVID, so I'm just assuming it could be as a part, whether it's seasonal allergies, whether it's carryover from regular flu symptoms, but we have noticed that upgrade, and I can't say for certain.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe they were hypersensitive to the potential and didn't know what else to do but dial 911 if they think they might have it?
And that could be the case, which I would encourage individuals to follow the CDC guidelines that are out there in regards to, if you feel that you have those symptoms, go through, a lot of the information is on the fire department website to provide you guidance so that you're not calling and possibly putting a higher level of risk or overloading a system that is already at its max capacity.
I've also read that, exactly what you just said, but don't go to your doctor, but call your doctor first.
Yes.
Which is another important step, so.
Because if you do not have the symptoms, we do not want you transporting to the hospital. We want to be able to, we call it triaging, so that we can identify you and isolate you so you can be tested prior to entering the hospital.
All right, well, thank you very much. Any comments from council or questions?
Chief, just one question that come to mind, and we've heard it on the news media, I've seen even post on Facebook. I know that you have been working on this for several months. You're doing everything to keep all of our employees safe, and I know that the firefighters are extremely, probably more at risk because they respond to the health calls, you know, that you mentioned earlier, but we have masks, we have gloves, we're not having any issues in procuring any other supplies that may deemed necessary at this point?
We identified the issue very early, and we were able to get out in front on the PPE supply. We are starting to go through it, and we're working on long-term mechanisms. As of right now, the Yuba City Fire Department and all departments within Yuba City are adequately staffed with PPE right now.
Thank you, chief, for your forward thinking on that.
Through the mayor, PPE, just in case someone may not know.
Apologize, I tend to use acronyms a little bit too much. Personal protective equipment. So that's, we're talking masks, goggles, gowns, things along those nations.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, chief, can you elaborate a bit on the protective measures that our public safety first responders are taking? Should they become exposed? And maybe elaborate a little bit about how that all works if someone is exposed?
So, we try to identify it early through our emergency medical dispatching. So dispatchers asking those questions, identifying that you have those symptoms so that they can relay them information to firefighters and paramedics prior to arrival. If they receive any of those items that would be of concern, you will see them wear a different level of personal protective equipment. So they're instructed to wear masks, goggles, gloves, and especially gowns if they are going to be in very close contact in something like a CPR call. In the event that we do come back and it is a person under investigation, and so that we determine the level of risk. So there are certain categories, as a first responder, you're placed into, depending on what treatment you provided and what level of personal protective equipment you are wearing. The protocols we put in place are trying to get all of those exposures to at least a medium, if not low, category. However, sometimes things are beyond our knowledge, our ability, and just unforeseen that may place them into a higher risk. If they are categorized as a high-risk exposure, and the patient is tested and considered a person under investigation, there are situations where we will have firefighters go into a self-monitor style quarantine, where that means that we want to remove them from the fire station, and they're going to self-monitor their symptoms to make sure that they're not coming down with fevers until that person under investigation is tested for a positive or negative.
And typically, how long is that testing taking? I know there's been a few of those items or issues already arise?
So initially, the tests were very quick, at roughly around 24 hours to 48 hours. If you're a person who's come in contact as a first responder, or if it comes from a hospital that is a tier-one testing, that is supposed to be priority testing. However, we are starting to see, based upon the high level of exposures at hospital and first responders, these tests have gone from 24 hours to dramatically longer. We're pushing sometimes ninety-six in one case right now, even longer at this time.
And during that time, our first responders are then essentially on a self-monitored quarantine, which means what for the public?
So for the public, they're fine. We're trying to keep them isolated, but what it does is it's bigger, more than anything, it's that mental wear on those firefighters, going home, waiting for those test results. Anybody who's gone through any type of exposure for any communicable disease, it takes a mental toll on that firefighter and their families. So we want to try to get those results back in a timely fashion so that they're aware, so they can hopefully get that negative, take that load off of them. But in regards to the community, they're isolating themselves, and they're not going out in public, but it's more of a self-monitor stage versus a mandatory retirement, mandatory quarantine, or what we can call an isolation. So if you have a positive case, then you're placed in isolation versus quarantine.
So this could eventually burden the fire department if this thing continues to escalate a bit, and we could end up with quite a few firefighters not infected but in self-isolation mode?
So, yes, so we're doing everything we possibly can to try to get those exposure risks as low as possible, so when we get a person under investigation, we can instantly go back to that call and determine what level of PPE and what care, so we've added that personal protective equipment. We've added that into the port writing because sometimes it takes, it's not an immediate, some days it could be a day later. So it's hard to remember when you're running twenty calls a day, what exact level of personal protective equipment. So that's one of those items that we added. So absolutely, if we started to get several high cases and started to get people on quarantine, that will be a very large hit to the fire department's staffing and morale issue, and our level of service that we can provide to the community. So we want to try to keep those risks as low as possible, so that's why it's so important that the community members, when you call in, you're communicating those so that way those firefighters can take all the steps to stay in that low-risk category.
So in the background, it also remains extremely important that you get timely information from public health or whoever's receiving the results of those tests, correct?
Absolutely, that way I can get them back out and have them feeling confident that they're a negative test, and so that we're getting them back out on the floor so that we're not incurring overtime or workers' comp or anything associated with that, so absolutely.
Okay, chief, thank you very much for the patience in answering the questions.
Chief, is the, do we have any idea how many people have been tested, or is that information even releasable on what the results are, anything like that?
So initially, the Bye County Public Health Director was, all tests went through her, so she was able to track those cases they went. There was a tracking number for, it's called a PUI, or Person Under Investigation, so they were able to track that. Once the public testing portion opened up, that would have been about four or five days ago, those tests don't have to go through the public health director. As a result, there's not a tracking mechanism now to get an overall testing level. However, all positive results do come back to the public health director, which then can be forwarded back to first responders or those communities.
All right, so if we don't really have access to who's being tested, or how many people have been tested anymore, correct?
Not through the public health director, no.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Anything else? Nope, all right.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. How are you this evening?
Fine, thank you. Thank you very much.
So a quick report on community services and update. For our recreation programs, the senior center is closed, Goshay Aquatic Park on the interior is closed as well. All recreation programs have been suspended. On animal services, we are in providing full service as it relates to our animal control officers out on the roads. The shelter is being utilized still. However, if somebody is coming to look for an animal that maybe got out, jumped the fence, we have a process where they knock on the door, we communicate with them, we get information from them, and then if their animal is in the shelter, then we take care of that. But the doors are locked as well, like you were hearing from every other facility. Our parks department are, probably the most recent situation is that we have closed our playground structures, but our parks are open. We took that step a few days ago. It seems to be palatable so far in our community. We are hoping that our community recognizes and understands the social distancing out in the fields, when they're playing soccer, they're playing football. We certainly want them to utilize our parks, but we want them to be safe. As it relates to the next steps, we hope that, we don't have to, but, you know, we will take that as it comes, and certainly take higher steps to make sure that there's no access to our playgrounds if needed, but we certainly hope that is not needed. As it relates to a couple other topics, our care and shelter, I'm in daily contact with the Sutter County and Yuba County Directors of Health and Human Services. A little update on some homeless services. Food is being distributed by the Sheriff Posse's Arena at noon on a daily basis. There's hand washing stations, portable toilets there as well. The food is being provided by the Salvation Army. The county, both counties are in the process of putting approximately six trailers at the fairgrounds. Those trailers will be used exclusively for homeless individuals that are infected by the COVID-19, and which they need to be quarantined. Right now, the contract is being solidified this evening and first thing tomorrow, so I believe they will actually be on the ground by the end of tomorrow. Food banks are in good condition right now. They have plenty of food. They have, are doing a pretty good job with their staffing. Their desire is to ask their volunteers that are sixty-five and older to go home and be safe, and so volunteers are stepping up from the Yuba-Sutter Task Force, and I'll get to that here in a second. I'm gonna go back, I'm sorry, as it relates to the other homeless, I believe that there are vouchers that are being handed out as well to individuals, not only that are homeless, but that are also sixty-five and older and have some type of chronic disease, and those vouchers are to, for local hotels in Marysville and in Yuba City. I mentioned it a few minutes ago, as far as the Yuba-Sutter Task Force, there's a group of individuals that have stepped up in the past when we've had emergencies. These are typically the same individuals that are putting together this task force. They are just getting themselves organized. They will be looking at planning, financing, or creating some type of fundraising program, I believe, communications, logistics, and operations. So really, their goal is to get as many volunteers, and if you, the public, if they're watching this, if they're interested in volunteering, they should go to JustServe.org. You fill out the information, and you will see the task force option available. Their plan is to, as things ramp up or where the need is, that information will get to them, and then they will help. They are currently connected with, again, Yuba County and Sutter County as well, and they are not part of the EOC, but they, the EOC and communities like ourselves will certainly utilize, and considering they're so gracious. That is all I have for you at this time.
All right.
Through the mayor, thank you, Brad. I heard positive things in reference to the playgrounds and the flyers that were put out there because of children and this COVID-19, so I'm glad that you immediately responded to that and took care of that for our city. I do have a question in the shelter and care. Can you explain or share more about who's actually running that? Because you're, we're part of it, but we're not actually in charge of that shelter and care, and who's organizing all that, and?
So my contact is the, you know, Sutter County, Nancy O'Hara, but she is not at the EOC either. Who is at the EOC under care and shelter is a gentleman by the name of Tony Gordon, and he is running the care and shelter part. So then, whatever comes up, whatever's developed, plan-wise, he is communicating that to Nancy, which is Sutter County, which obviously helps us, and then Jim Vasquez with Yuba County.
So we're gaining information mainly about the services and potential homeless individuals that could be referred to some of these services, correct? So the trailers that you mentioned, did you mention the trailers?
I did.
The, so Sutter County's gonna administer those trailers, and where are they gonna be placed at?
At the fairgrounds, in Yuba City.
And so they're handling that specifically for individuals that are homeless that may be with COVID-19 and to isolate or to quarantine, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then what about Better Way? How are the services at that location?
So as of today, Better Way was just about full, but they still had five beds available.
Okay. So services are being provided to our homeless community in multiple directions and region, and so our role would be as a city is?
More of a support system.
Okay. So we're directly not in charge of these programs ourselves?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Brad, for the presentation. Maybe you could expand a little bit on your role as it pertains to the city and the Care and Shelter Branch as it comes out of the Emergency Operation, Bye County Emergency Operations Center?
My role is just as things, for two, I see it as two roles. One is that if there is something that is going to be happening in the city of Yuba City, it is my desire that it is communicated, and then I can get that information out to, you know, the people that follow the city as well, obviously to council members. And then the second thing is a resource, so I anticipate as things, or hopefully things get better, but if they don't, I anticipate that more resources are going to be needed, whether it's going to be facilities that the city have, or it may be staffing, depending on care and shelter for a variety of problems.
So basically, thank you for the explanation. Basically, you're our link to the Bye County EOC involving the care and shelter of folks as far as, as living space, homeless, feeding, et cetera?
Correct.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you mind saying what EOC is, just in case someone misses that?
Emergency Operations Center, sorry. I suffer from the same thing, the chief, fire chief, I use acronyms, so.
Can you describe what an EOC functions, just for a little, just a couple sentences, that's all I'm asking for, thank you.
Well, I would rather defer to the fire chief, sorry, he's gonna give me the evil stare because it just, it kind of struck me as well, councilwoman, that maybe we need to talk a little bit about, just briefly, not getting down too deep into the weeds, what the EOC is and the city's relationship in a positive way with that EOC.
Mayor, council members, so there's a lot of acronyms. So a DOC, which is what the city currently has, is a Department Operations Center. So usually that's focused around an event that you're trying to either handle at a smaller level, like the way we're looking at it is continuity at government. There's also, as Bye County Public Health also has a DOC, so on a smaller level. An emergency operations center is an incident command structure that is set up to be able to mitigate an incident. It's way able to spread out and add, not necessarily continuity, but actually a flow of communication and a flow of operations that go up and down so nothing is missed, and you're able to expand out because sometimes incident gets so big that you aren't able to handle it at a smaller incident command system level, you need to go much bigger. So like the Orville spillways was a specific incident where an EOC needed to be activated to be able to handle the magnitude of that incident. So Bye County has set up an emergency operations center to make sure to be able to spread out that, that level of responsibility, that communication, that workload, so that there is accountability associated with that. is accountability associated with that. Right now, the Bye County is, is handling that portion of it on their own, and as Mr. McIntyre just said, he is the representative for the shell, shelter and care portion of that from the city.
Thank you for the clarification. I think sometimes the ver, the view may be that we're in charge of that, but we're a branch of that.
We're in...
Or conversa, I'm just, for the public's sake, just to give the information, but we could, we don't need to go too deep into it if you don't find that...
As of right now, we are not a branch of the EOC. We are, we're running our DOC portion for the city. We are not actively involved in the EOC portion of the Bye County incident.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Mr. McIntyre, I know you're back over there, but what I'm hearing is kind of a, an overall general sense that communication is the real key that, that makes this whole thing work. And I know that you, as well as all the other department heads, have a lot on your plate, but that's the reason that they have the EOC, the DCs, is so all the communication flows through one channel, and then we're able to take action, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. It reminds me of the days that I was in the Air Force, because we would have the command centers, we'd have the battle staffs, and it's the same type of, same type of operation to where nothing gets missed because there's accountability, timely information being passed through, and it makes it all work. Just one suggestion, and first of all, I wanna say thank you to all the people in Yuba City for sheltering as much as they have. I've been by the parks, they've been vastly empty for the most part, people have been practicing social distancing, people even shooting hoops have been not one-on-one, but just kinda standing around shooting, so it's been, there's getting out there, but they're practicing the social distancing, and I just wanna say thank you for what they've done so far. But with the task force, these, this individuals are great for our community, they always help, but if we can encourage them to get linked up with those volunteers that you mentioned earlier, if we can push them in that direction, because we really need to get those over 65 that are a vital part of that link at home where they need to be, so that they can't be possibly exposed to something, and, and let the younger generations, myself and the others, step up and, and fill their shoes for a while. So that would be all I would ask, as we pass that on to the task force, and thank you as well.
Well, Councilman Shaw, I appreciate you bringing that up. That is one of their main, their primary focus to start with. I think they are thinking of other things, but they know what their first primary focus is, and it is individuals 65 and older. I would also just kinda like, and to communicate a little bit about what we were just talking about, the EOC and everything, is that, you know, in my experience with the city and our residents, is that they need a consistent message. And so when we're talking about everybody that's communicating, that consistent message is imperative to how people feel, the information that they're receiving, and I think if the EOC and ourselves are doing it correctly, that happens.
All right. Thank you very much, Brad.
All right, so good evening, my, for the public, Ben Moody, Development Services Director, and also for the public, the Development Services Department oversees building, planning, code enforcement, and housing elements. And so as Ms. Langley said earlier, the city hall is closed to the public, but with the Development Services, I've been working behind the scenes and with staff to basically remain open at a limited capacity through telecommunion options and various planned, scheduled actions. And so right now, phone calls for building, planning services are still being answered, they're being forwarded to individuals remotely. We're still taking building permits online and processing those with plan checks and plan reviews. The workload has definitely decreased. This week, we've, we've seen a significant drop in, because of the social distancing and people being out, so the building permit applications, building permit, building inspections and code enforcement volume has definitely reduced. And so, so with those different actions, we're trying to work with each element of that and figure out how to keep it going on a, on a limited basis to, so we provide that essential service to the community. And also, there's been a lot of questions. As this economic crisis continues, as far as references for resources and, and links to, for relief, we're pushing the public to, or the city's webpage, which has a multitude of links that go off for various resources that are, for food assistance through the southern, southern Yuba County, through the Chamber of Commerce, different economic resources through the Small Business Association. So we're urging any businesses or the public that is looking for different options for resources and relief to please visit the Yuba City homepage and then work through that COVID-19 resource page. And so as we, as we continue to develop and hear of more resources from our community, we'll keep adding to that page. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just to, for the business folks out there, we do have resources available that we can go to our website, and they can have several links to resources for them, be it loans or other type of information for them to help them out.
So right now, there's a general webpage that then breaks down the links into different items for, and specifically for the business resources, it links to the, the Chamber and the EDC, and then also we'll be adding to that to work through that, to, to add to the various Small Business Association loans and different, different options that are coming out.
Okay, so more information gonna be available sometime soon? Perfect. Thank you very much, sir.
Through the mayor, perhaps a, a request through the mayor and through staff to, to bring the Chamber of Commerce and the Brendan Stranix from the EDC to, to our next scheduled meeting to present opportunities they may have for the business community that they're aware of. I know this is gonna continue to emerge, and they would probably be the latest and greatest info source.
I think we're on that, we've had that conversation, it's a good idea. Yes, ma'am?
Through the mayor, I, I am aware that also through EDC, there's a consultant that they utilize for small business administration, so I'm not sure if that person would be another person that could come in, share some information at our next meeting, if that's possible, or, or just add that as a resource and link on our website along to EDC. But I do believe that EDC and the Chamber of Commerce have established a, a link on their websites as well for individuals to utilize. So any relief to our local businesses is, is really important, in particular with our restaurants and other smaller businesses in this community that are needing support and assistance, and I think that would be a really good direction. And along with that is to plan something maybe in the future as we see how the outcomes of these issues arise, that perhaps we could do some additional support and resources linked to, to those two other websites. I hope that makes sense to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I think that it's important to, to say to our businesses in, in this community that it's an understatement to say that this council's not concerned about our local businesses and our local residents or employees. Just know that right now, we're not gonna have all the answers to every question that everybody has, but I tell you, there's five of us that aren't sleeping a whole lot right now because we're, we're carrying this burden and we're trying to figure it out. And I know that I'm one of five council members that are bound and determined that together as a city, we will get through this, and we do hear our local businesses, and we're gonna control what we can control. And unfortunately, there's a lot that we can't control. But I don't say this lightly, but it's been said a lot, we are all in this together, one community. There's 68,000 of us here, there's over 100,000 between the two counties. We will come out of this strong. The president talked today about trying to get America back to work by Easter and how great that would be. I know that's a few weeks away, but it's a good goal to set, and I appreciate Mr. Moody putting up all the links, because a lot of that help's gonna come from the federal government, the state government, things that are way beyond our control. And if we can just be that conduit, I referred to it Saturday morning in our closed session as being the, the center of the wagon wheel to where we can just get them in touch with the right resources. If we can do that, and you're already on it, I do appreciate it, and just know that we're all in this together. We will come out of this, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Sir? Ethan? All right.
Through the mayor, I just wanna give the website, thanks, Ben, because I just went to, it's YSEDc.org, YSEDc.org, and on there, there's a link for COVID-19 business resources, and then you can find our website and link onto that, and in our website, we have a specific area for COVID-19, and there's a lot of really good, helpful information, not necessarily all of it for businesses, but it is a general great resource of all the different things that are happening in our community. So thanks to our staff, thank you, Ben, for, for keeping up with and linking all this information right to our website, so certainly appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely a joint effort through the DOC, regular information's coming through admin's office with George Barlow, and then also, as we continue to get information, we'll keep updating that site.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Spencer Morrison, I'm your finance director, and I'm here to report on the state of the Finance and IT Department and some of the fiscal things that we see coming in the near future. The IT and Finance Departments, we are a support group, and that's what we're doing, that's our role right now during this response. IT is supporting essential services and teleworkers, which is a sort of a new field for IT. In the, on the finance side, in the Finance Division, utility bills are going out on time, so we have staff working to make sure that calculations are correct and that the bills get mailed. We are answering calls related to utility billing questions. We found that very early that when we sent customer service staff home, the dispatcher started receiving a lot more utility bill questions, so we tried to act as quickly as we could, and we brought a one-person in to help answer those phone calls. And that first day from 11:00 AM until about 4:00 PM, I think was the last call, was 39 calls. So we expect to be getting a few calls throughout each day. The accountants are working on budget, of course, and payroll and accounts payable, so we're making sure that the essential services staff is getting, getting paid on time and that the city's bills are being paid, which is our part of helping local businesses that, that we're using during this response. And we're also managing the treasury, of course, and supporting all the other COVID-19 response that we can. We're very concerned about expenses, so we've been really looking at the city expenditures during the response, and we've created coding and ways for the departments to, and divisions to code the response expenses, and we're not seeing a lot now. As Chief said, many supplies are coming through the, the EOC and, and other, other means, and so we're, we're ready, we're ready to track it and ready to try to get reimbursed for it if, if that does ramp up. Overtime is being incurred now, but it's not as great as we think that it possibly could be, but we also watching overtime as well, just depending on scenarios. The cash flow for the revenues, we're gonna see a decline. It's, this is affecting so many businesses and, and some of our revenue sources, especially sales tax. We, you know, March and potentially April, if, as this incident continues, is really gonna hurt the sales tax as it hurts the business in the local, local region. And property tax, we do not expect any declines in property taxes, we're a teeter plan city, which means that the county automatically collects all of the property taxes that were, or actually, I should say that the county pays the city for all the property taxes that are levied, not collected, and then the, the county takes on the burden of collecting all the property taxes and taking care of delinquencies. Other major general fund revenues, Mr. Moody mentioned building permits, that they're gonna be down. However, we did reach about 80% of our budget so far for the fiscal year. Same with business licenses, business licenses were due in February, so we've collected most of the business license revenue that we're gonna collect for the year. It's gonna be TOT with our hotel, hotel motel surcharge, the hotels and motels collecting, what they're collecting is gonna be down based on occupancy being down. On reserves, we do have our Healthy Cities Reserve and some discretionary funds that the General Fund, that this council can tap into to help cover General Fund if we have prolonged revenue decreases. And with the FEMA, we do have the opportunity to, this is a disaster, so we have the opportunity to recoup funds, as I mentioned, so we are coding COVID response expenditures, and we will plan to submit an application for grant reimbursement from FEMA and CAL OES, which is the California Emergency Service. And on pension costs, that's gotta be on everybody's mind. We know that pension cost is very tied to investment returns for the pension fund at CalPERS, and so we're looking at very, very dismal investment returns right now, and in, that will affect our books in, or our expenses greatly in two years, and we'll be working on trying to estimate what that, what that hit will be to our pension costs. Other than that, the, the department or the Finance Division is trying to be very forward-looking, and we're considering the impacts of the, the current response and the loss of revenue and the potentially increased expenses in the current fiscal year, and we are looking at adjusting current year spending in ways that will still allow us to support the response. That's what I have. Any questions for me?
Through the mayor, thank you, Spencer. It, it does sound like we, you and the rest of the city staff are taking all the appropriate methods to find out where we are, where we might be, and adjusting on the fly, which I certainly appreciate. It's, it's the proper way to do business, and even though some of the messaging is probably not pleasant to give, I appreciate getting the real thing, so thank you. There is one ask, a specific ask, and that is, I know that there are specific funds that we get that are controlled by the state, and I would, I would refer to just one as an example, and that's the Low Mod Housing Asset Fund, and I think there are restrictions on that and several others. Is that something that perhaps James Gallagher and/or Senator Nielsen, we could at least ask them to find out if there's going to be any relaxation on the ability to tap into those funds during this emergency?
I, we're definitely open to that suggestion, that idea. I know that some of the staff, especially that deals with the housing, our housing analyst and Mr. Moody in Development Services have been looking at these funds and, and trying to find out what the restrictions are, if there's any way that we can utilize them for relief for our community. I don't know if Ben's, Mr. Moody, he's, he's nodding, so, so that's, that's the case, and I anticipate staff will continue to look at those sources.
It just seems that, that those two individuals that I mentioned before, some of McGallagher and Senator Nielsen would be in, in, in support, I would hope, of, of opportunities when necessary during an emergency to allow local government to, to tap into those funds, even if it was on a, a payback basis or whatever, but I, I can see where, if this thing continues to play out, which I hope it does not, that, as Councilman Shaw said, we've got businesses, and Councilman Esmondola also echoed, we've got businesses and citizens that are going to be economically hit, and I think anything that we can do as a city within the rights and the legal ability of the city to do, to consider inside and outside of the box, would be, would be appropriate. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Morrison, I appreciate your, you know, giving us your honest feedback tonight. We know what sales tax is gonna be hit hard. We know that it's had some slowing going into late February as it started ramping up into March, and we don't know exactly how long it's gonna take the CDFDA to really start releasing those funds, and they are definitely gonna be down. I've heard of the restaurant industry, for one, the revenue... I've heard of the restaurant industry, for one, the revenue has been down 50-plus percent, so that definitely is going to have a hit on cash flow. I just want to ask you going forward, you know, we do have the reserve that you talked about, but if we do have to reach into those reserves, those will be to maintain our primary functions as a municipality during this time, and we're not going to be out here doing extra things. This is to provide safe drinking water, the sewage treatment plants, the police, the fire, the public works, that's where our energy is going to be focused if we have to dip into reserve funds, that's going to take the top priority, am I correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. I just want to say thank you. I know you're up to your eyeballs, this is my usual tax time, which we actually got a three-month extension there, so it took a little pressure off me, but I know what you're under, and we're asking you to pull a rabbit out of the hat, and I hope when you find a dozen rabbits in that hat, and I just want to say thank you for what you're doing, so, Mr. Mayor.
Thought you were reaching for the button. All right. Thank you very much, Spencer. I too appreciate your efforts and the forward thinking that you're doing, weighing all the possibilities, or at least with the information you have and the contingencies moving forward, and so we really appreciate that. Did you have something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to ask, thank you, Mayor, to, with the FEMA you mentioned, how does that look like? How do we get reimbursed from FEMA?
So we track our costs, that's the number one thing, and then we'll start an application process very soon. In fact, I was looking at the application today, we just got a revised application from them. And then we just had this experience three years ago, we will be put in touch with CAL OES, who is the California branch of emergency services, and they will start to investigate or review our materials and start to make suggestions. So I don't have experience with this type of an event, the events that I've have experienced with, with FEMA reimbursement and CAL OES have been disasters where there are a lot of physical damage. So this is going to be a new one to me where we're really just talking about overtime, mostly. And so the overtime is one of the quicker, the earliest checks that we've ever received if been just for, we call it forced labor, and so that we're expecting maybe two or three months after the applications are final. It will be my expectation.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
All right, thank you very much. Unless there's anything further, we'll move on to item number four. All right. And Tara, would you please read the online comments we have? Do we still just have one?
We received one, and her question was answered by Chief Landon, so she said that, "Thank you."
All right, very good. So that's it? Do you have something you wanted to say?
The two written ones that I.
I have those right here.
Right.
I wanted to jump back to the.
Okay, sure.
Update, just quickly, was there was a, some of the cities and others around us have adopted several ordinances or several regulations, one being the evictions and that, and I think that we have an opportunity to listen to our city attorney, give us his opinion of that particular issue, if you would, if you'd want to let him.
Absolutely. Shannon, did you hear that request?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We have been advising our clients to use great caution before implementing a ban on evictions, even for a temporary period of time, and this is basically for three reasons. First of all, the governor has issued an executive order regarding evictions. While that executive order doesn't prohibit evictions directly, it does prevent landlords from charging more to re-rent the property, which provides an economic disconsistency to evict, which takes time and money. Now, this is in effect for 30 days from the date of issuance that came out sometime just over a week ago, so as a practical matter, there's no economic disconsistency to evict and then re-rent property. There are also other legal reasons that a city may not want to prohibit evictions. It can be a liability issue from cities, including a claim for what's called takings of a private property that's protected on the Constitution. This is legally less risky approach is to let the state do it, if the state's so inclined to do it, as the state has more resources to get reimbursement if these can be covered expenses, and they have more resource to fight any litigation related to constitutional takings claims of private property. And the third reason is, as a practical matter, evictions will not likely be an issue in the short midterm, as courts are closing down and restricting access, and as you know, criminal matters have constitutional priority over civil matters like eviction, and as a result, the backlog is going to be so large it may take months for an eviction to be even able to take place or to be able to go into court. And in fact, just a few hours ago, the Chief Justice of the Court of the State of California did issue a ban on trials taking place in both criminal and civil trials for the next 60 days. So under these circumstances, as a practical matter, it's very likely that any new evictions will even be able to be processed with the courts for at least the next couple of months. So under these circumstances, our suggestion has been to cities to wait and use caution and to evaluate the process before it goes forward. If it does start to become an issue, chances are the state will stop in first, but the city can certainly decide whether to take action at that time.
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chaffin, does the governor's order and such that he did, does that cover both residential and commercial properties? Because I'm thinking of our, again, our business owners that rent their space as well.
You know, Councilmember Shaw, I'm so sorry to tell you, I can't recall what his executive order 2820 said. I know it definitely does apply to residential, I can't recall if it applies to both commercial as well, but if there are any members of the public who are interested in finding that out, all we need to do is look up Governor's Order Number 2820, and it'll have the detailed information.
Oh, just thank you.
All right. Very good. Sure, no problem at all.